Hafa Deitz and Manana Sizouas, to each and every one of you here, this hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam Build-Up, Hagatna Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, and Technologies called to order. The time is exactly 9:09 a.m. And before I go any further, I just want to thank our audio team for expeditiously fixing the audio and apologize to the listening audience for our delay. But to the audio team, Sizouas Massey, for getting it worked up again. For the record, and in accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8, subsection 8, 107, public hearing notices were sent on Friday, May 7, 2021, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public notice on Wednesday, May 12, 2021, for the 48 hours prior. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the Legislature's website, www.guamlegislature.com. I'm going to say written testimonies may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver any testimony to our office at 163 Chalan Santa Papa Hagatna, Guam 96910. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we have Bill Number 103-36 COR is introduced by Legislative Secretary, Secretary-Senator Amanda L. Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and Senator Mary Camacho Torres, which is an act to add a new Chapter 29 to Division 2 of Title 22 Guam Code annotated relative to telehealth and telemedicine services during public health emergencies. Joining me here this morning, ladies and gentlemen, is our Speaker, Speaker Therister Lahe, Manana Sizouas. Thank you very much. Our Legislative Secretary, Senator Shelton, thank you so very much for joining us this morning. We do have the Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duennius. Good morning, sir. Thank you for joining us. Senator Tony Ada. Thank you for being the first one here. I have Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you. Good morning. Senator Telo Tydegui. Good morning. Thank you for being here. And our Saina Senator Jose Pito Terlae and Dankuluna Sizouas Massey for being here. And Senator Mary Torres, thank you so very much for being here this morning. Colleagues, and to the listening audience, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized and ordered to sign up on this sign-in sheet. I understand we have more than several this morning. Written testimonies may be read. In the interest of time, I will ask that each testimony be summarized to about three to no more than five minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Because we have a lot of folks wishing to testify, we will have a timer to dictate the time, the complete time, and I will respectfully cut off those who go over that timeline. Testimonies shall be confined to the substance of the bill. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for the proceedings. Individuals who do not comply may be escorted out from the public hearing room. When you speak, I ask to please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. I would ask that you please state your name for the record, where are you from, and if you support or do not support the bill during your testimony. Those who do not follow these rules of engagements will be asked and be removed from the public hearing room. I will note for the record that this is the second public hearing on Bill Number 103-36 for this term. I will quickly go through the history of this legislation. This bill was originally introduced in the 35th Guam Legislature as Bill Number 325-35 COR on March 30, 2020, which was over a year ago. It was referred to the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, and the Guam Build-Up on October 29, 2020, and was publicly heard in the 35th Guam Legislature on November 19, 2020, which various members of the public, including the Department of Public Health, as well as health insurance companies that provided testimony. The bill was reintroduced in the 36 Guam Legislature as Bill Number 103-36 COR. The first hearing took place a month ago on April 12, 2021. A second public hearing was requested by members of the public, which we have accommodated. To this day, we have received written testimony from Dr. Shea, Mr. Hassan Kirabani of Edna International, Ms. Maria Espinoza, Ms. Viola Akfaji, Ms. Ruth Gurusami of HSP, and Mr. Frank Campillo of Selectcare. And with that being said, we will now move on to the item, the only item on the agenda, Bill 103-36, as introduced by Legislative Secretary Amanda Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and Senator Mary Camacho Torres. And at this time, colleagues and to the listening audience, I will turn it over to Legislative Secretary Shelton for her opening remarks.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Chair, thank you very much, Vice Speaker, for convening this second public hearing on Bill 103, an act to add a new Chapter 29 to Division 2 of Title 22 Guam Code annotated relative to telehealth and telemedicine services during public health emergencies. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill and to further hear testimony from our public. Before we proceed with further discussion on the bill, I would like to submit to this esteemed committee the following proposed amendments, which are a result of prior testimony in the first public hearing on the bill and weeks of meetings with constituents. One, to expand telemedicine and telehealth as provided in this bill beyond public health emergencies. Two, to make clearer the ultimate authority of our local medical providers over the diagnosis and care of our residents by adding a definition for non-resident licensed consulting providers who may perform services so long as they consult with a healthcare professional licensed in Guam who has ultimate authority over the diagnosis and care of the patient. Three, that the following language be included as a new section to read. Nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of abortion procedures as defined under Guam law via telemedicine. I want to be very clear with everyone that the intent of this bill is to ensure the continuity of care for Guam residents and not inadvertently allow for abortion procedures via telemedicine. I ask the Chair and this committee that any version of Bill 103 to be reported out include this language. Madam Chair, as you mentioned, I introduced a very similar version of this bill last term at the height of the pandemic, when we learned from many constituents that Guam insurance companies were not covering all telemedicine and telehealth expenses. I'd introduced it again this term to address the same concerns that still prevail. The bill also aims to ensure the continuity of care of Guam residents who are unable to travel for medical appointments to places such as the Philippines or the mainland for any or any other frequented jurisdiction. From our previous discussions on this bill, Bill 103 helps our island to continue its efforts in limiting potential exposure of patients and providers, preserving Guam's personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies, and alleviating the patient caseload at Guam's healthcare institutions, while providing an avenue for insured patients to seek less costly medical care. Bill 103 further puts in place a reimbursement scheme for insurers for the telehealth diagnosis, consultations, or treatments of patients equal to coverage for the same services through face-to-face consultation. These provisions further solidify mutual agreements between healthcare providers and insurance companies to develop acceptable payment rates and methodologies for telehealth and telemedicine services. I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for holding this second hearing in hopes of receiving feedback from our island's insurance industry, and I look forward to hearing testimony from our insurance providers. I do understand that several have submitted written testimony today. And I had no intention whatsoever to expand abortion services through this bill on Guam via telemedicine. Again, the bill was introduced prior to any ACLU lawsuit that called for amendments to Guam's abortion law. The bill does not make changes to any Guam law governing abortion. To be clear, the Legislature would have to change the law pertaining to abortion to allow teleabortions. If two laws govern the same factual situation, the law governing a specific subject matter will always override a law governing only general matters. In other words, on matters regarding abortion, the current law will prevail and disallow the expansion of such services via telemedicine. Madam Chair, this is about providing health care to our people in the safest means possible. And right now, we know that telehealth and telemedicine ensures that our people continue to receive the care they need and they deserve in the safest way possible. I want to thank everyone who has provided testimony on this bill and those who came to me with their concerns. I hope that we can all work together to ensure that we see the bigger picture here, that our people are in need of proper health care, one that, one they are able to receive from off-island providers and are now unable to because of the pandemic. We want to ensure that any disruptions to the continuity of care for our people, even beyond this pandemic, never happens again. Sizouas Massey, Madam Chair, and thank you to our colleagues and all those who have come down here to the public hearing room to testify today. I look forward to a very productive discussion on the bill.
You're very welcome, Legislative Secretary. Colleagues, I have over two pages right now of testimony. I will call the first panel in, so that would be the first four. I will ask that Ms. Sharon E. O'Malley, Deacon Frank Tenorio, Maria R., I think this is Tenorio, and Viola Akfaji. Your, please, come in. Manana Sizouas, Samzu todos. Again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll go ahead and start in as those that signed up on the sign-in sheet, so I'll just start from my right. Ms. Sharon O'Malley, you may proceed. Please state your name for the record.
This is on? Okay, great. My name is Sharon E. O'Malley. First, before I start reading, I provided some copies of my written testimony, I mean, my oral testimony, and I will read my, I gave, sorry, I gave copies to whoever needed it. Anyway, before I started, I want to thank you because I listened to your opening statements. Thank you very much for your suggested amendments and your opening comments. Very appreciated. Okay, I will continue to read my statement prior to hearing about all the amendments because I wanted to know what my concerns were. So I'll start. Okay. "Good morning, Senators and other interested participants. Senator Barnes, thank you for setting up the second public hearing in regards to Bill Number 103-36. Where do I start? I'm not a politician, and I don't think I want to be, but in this last month, I've done a lot of political studying. Then this past week, I looked up and thought to myself, I miss Senator Ben Pangolinan. Senator Ben Pangolinan didn't really know me, but I personally voted for him every time he ran. We were on different political parties, but as I told my brother years ago, I often do not, did not worry about some things at the Guam Legislature because Ben Pangolinan was an honest, honorable, and hard-working man. I always felt he watched the back of the people of Guam, and he constantly questioned any bill that came up for consideration. So this past week, I thought, I really could have used his help. Bill Number 103-36 was presented with a lot of good intentions by its authors. That I choose to believe. The senators' concerns for the use of telemedicine and the insurance coverage for the same seem evident in the writings of the bill. So upon first reading the bill, it seemed acceptable, but then I looked at the bill from the eyes of a pro-lifer and saw many concerns. Some may say that I am being over-cautious and a bit too much, but after discussions with others, I think my concerns were correct. I will be honest and say that my biggest worries have to do with teleabortion. Teleabortion is the new way of abortion during this COVID-19 crisis. It's easy, almost too easy. Teleabortion is very dangerous and should be considered a national concern. The potential damage which will result from allowing teleabortion has not been fully evaluated yet. Telemedicine has been around and utilized on Guam as far back as I can remember. The first time I had ever seen it in use was over 20 years ago, when my friend's son was in a serious moped accident. He severely damaged his skull and would have surely died if it wasn't for the fact that a visiting trauma doctor was on the outer islands and was able to review and then assist in the operation of his skull during, via the television. It saved his life. Since then, it has evolved into a commonly-used mechanism which has saved many lives over the years. Unfortunately, it has now evolved into teleabortion, which is the method of killing babies over the internet. Very sad. While I have not heard of anyone who has had problems with the coverage of their use of telemedicine, the senators have expressed concerns that they say they have heard. They say they are trying to rectify the problem with this bill. In the writing of the bill, I believe they may have unknowingly made loopholes which will open the door for teleabortion. I would like to point out my concerns. One of my first concerns is the idea that the bill was only for the use during public health emergencies. Well, during public health emergencies, a lot of power and decision-making is put into a different group of people over and beyond regular lawmaking. This becomes dangerous because the definition of a public health emergency becomes gray, and the mechanism of who becomes in charge becomes questionable. The way I see it, public law becomes public law after much consideration and review and comments. This is to keep honesty and integrity in our system. During a public emergency, there is a seemingly change of power and authority which can override existing law. Sometimes, these so-called temporary laws cause questionable actions. This Bill Number 103-36 turns over a great deal of power, not only to the Guam Public Health and Social Services, but to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, which, to my understanding, has its own political powers under question. So all this decision-making comes under a politically energized board, of course, only during public health emergencies, which can be long enough to cause a lot of damage. The bill removes the in-person requirement for just about everything. Section 29303a replaces the in-person visit. B replaces the in-person evaluation and allows treatment of the patient. C does not allow telehealth to services to prescribe a controlled substance, which teleabortion pills are, unless the following. One, the treatment of psychiatric disorder. Anyone can easily say that not being able to find a doctor for an abortion is causing them mental stress and psychiatric problems, thus making them qualify for this exemption. D, again, replaces an in-person visit. Section 29306a 1 and 2 describes a teleabortion situation. As abortion is legal in Guam, this section would be legal, but there have not been any established regulations in regards to the reporting of teleabortion. A surgical abortion is reported and documented, and aborted babies are turned into GMH pathology for proper documentation and disposal. Babies killed in a teleabortion are flushed down the toilet or thrown in the trash to be disposed of when the weekly trash collection comes around. Regulations need to be established and reviewed for proper documentation and reporting of teleabortions.
Sharon, thank you so very much. Again, we will stick to the merits of this, the five minutes.
No problem.
Thank you so very much for your consideration, and thank you for acknowledging that the amendments will be made. But ladies and gentlemen, the Executive Director from Behavioral Health is listening online right now but has to be in a pressing meeting and asked if I could read this publicly. Unable to make the Bill 103 public hearing because I'm in a pressing meeting, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center supports 103 as we are currently fully utilizing this mode of service delivery during this COVID-19 emergency. Gibwick created a policy for telehealth services last year, June 2020, to guide our providers. We will submit written testimony that will include recommendations to authorization the use of telehealth as a legitimate form of services delivery beyond pandemic and public emergency. Please mention our support for the record, and Dankuluna Sizouas Massey. And I will, this will be duly noted, and we will await her written testimony to the body, so she can go into her meeting now. Next, we have Deacon.
Madam Chair, can I, I'd like to object to cutting off testimony.
Senator Duennius, one moment, please. Minority Leader, one moment, please.
I think that we should not cut down.
Deacon Frank Tenorio, I will acknowledge, Minority Leader, please, with all due respect.
I want to register that I think this is wrong to cut off testimony from individuals who are trying to testify. We could stay here all day. There's no reason why not. They put their time to come down here.
Minority Leader.
I object to you cutting off individuals' ability to testify, fully. Thank you.
Senator, Deacon Frank Tenorio, I will acknowledge you at this time. You may proceed.
Buenos todos samzu.
Manana Sizouas.
Ugo fagre de se este pamega ege gire na ora tan. Guaha problemahu, badde problema neguinahu, yena ina isaina. Tiu moliko man hungu, matahu tiu goft samponesta. Yadengo tiu malago tu bohigi. Lo motu zu maage gine, prata fanhita. Tu mati zi, isaina tas Jesucristo. Motu gi tanu, saporo sod bahia. Jata, po lugi, gikiluus. Pushe every time, dispensa du, and femeno tamorudu, dan fudo englis, mapusu problema girona area. Lo ugo fgaiza hanzu todos, gano hulu. Todos du samzu, recunisa, majority of you. I believe, na inti ngudzuluku, za ugo fagre de se este pamega ege gire, za parame zangani amzu. Na ugo fgaiza sizuus, za ugo fgaiza hanzu, dan todos, itanu pamegon na sizuus. Oititoto Guam, oititoto saipana, badde whole world, it todos itanu. Estigi, fida na guine, isaina tas Jesucristo, iprata guaiza gui, sita tada, den Espirito Santo, dan prata fanagaiza. Mungana ta kundene i prohimu, sa umisau. Ta kundene i isau, lo i prohimu, ta ta du du ti, jo tulai kage, jo fatu tati ge grasa duus. Dispensa du agiro mimikso, so omku du, esta, za ti gof, moliko kumentus luku. Lo innayu lagadi ne, para be quentus, para be defendi, edus ya, inenene, estaman makunsibit, ye, gire ni laie. ye, gireni laie, gina na niha. Da pes, grasa duus, dan nina indus, da gida fumatina sidus, ta imana, ane man motu gine, gi tanu, ane man nenit loki. Da man yinata ma agadesi, so motu gi tanu safely, para siduus, dan para man yinata, dan man ilutas ya. Enegi telego na isaina iprata fanagai za. Hatred, 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 hatred is what we have nowadays. We have to change that mentality to love, love, love. True love is loving God with our whole heart, with our being and everything that we are, and to love our neighbor as ourselves. Thus, the Ten Commandments, and the Ten Commandment is absolutely important, not for the Catholics, not for Christians, not for the Jews, but for the whole world. Because God loves those who are not Catholics, those who are not Christians. God loves all of us, the worst sinner. God loves the worst sinner. He will not appreciate the sin, but loves the sinner. So I'm here to ask and touch your heart if you are not in that heart of bringing the baby into this world, no matter what, safely, and to appreciate and to love, so that that baby will grow also to know and to love us as they grow. This is the message of the gospel for our Lord. And I don't have written, but I want to share to you that all my life, I worked so hard in defense of human life, in caring for the poor, and I guess most of you who know me, they know what I have done in my lifetime, that I gave up my life to care for the poor. I gave up my life to defend human life. I gave up my life even up to now, when I was so condemned by some people that removed me from Kamala Gharida. Yet, I cannot hate any of them. I love them. I mean, I like what they did to me, but I still remain loving Jesus and loving them, for all of us, we're called to forgive and to be compassionate to those people who we call sinners, because when they change, they can probably be holier than you and I put together. So we have that blessing from God to acknowledge that we do believe that sinners can change and come back. If you are not pro-life, please be pro-life, because Jesus wants us to be pro-life. Now, I don't know whether I'm, what do you call, can you do me a favor, Ayu? I'm not trying to change your, but this is all I got. Can you give to me? And because I love God, I love you all. Amanda, you and I were close too. Most of you, when you were young, we were close too. Mrs. Brown, Senator Brown, you were close to me too. Practically, most of you are close to me, because once you're a friend of mine, you're included in my prayer, so that means you're close, because also all I do is praying for everybody. So now, before I close, I want.
Okay.
I want to ask you to be with me, because I don't know whether you agree with me for being here to proclaim the love of God to us and so that we can go to Jesus and ask Him to help us love one another. And so, may you please help me by reciting this prayer together, so that all the world, not only for Guam, will be pro-life, so that no baby will be denied to come into this world, but we will allow them to come and we love them. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will safely bring into this world our brothers and sisters who are still in their mother's wombs. I pray that they may live to know you, love you, serve you, give you glory, honor, and praises. But most especially, that they acknowledge and appreciate this most precious gift of life that you have given them. I ask this to our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever, amen.
Sidoos Maasi, Deacon Tenorio, put the jomo prayer.
Do it, Maasi.
Thank you, Deacon Tenorio. Again, colleagues and to the listening audience out there, based on the rules of engagement, the testimonies will be confined to the substance of the bill. I will note for the record to the listening audience and anybody who's out there, that this again will be premised on telehealth and telemedicine. I appreciate the support from the main author and will include it in the amendment to the bill, that nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under the Guam law via telemedicine. I need to note that to the listening audience, and I'm hoping that with the testimony presented this morning, that we stay confined into the draft of the legislation with the recommendation of the author. So at this time, and I will, as the oversight chair and the standing rules, in our standing rules, put the limit, because we have three pages of those who need to testify, and I will note for the record that every written testimony that comes in for this bill will be appended to the committee report. And I hope that my colleagues and all the listening audience will know that, but we'll keep the oral testimony to a maximum of no more than five minutes. At this time, I will acknowledge Mrs. Tenorio. Maria, put for board, Consigueret Mona Nora.
Sidoos Maasi. My name is Maria Rivera Tenorio. We wanted to join you personally during the discussion of Bill 103-36, to prohibit the use of tele-abortion. If my understanding of tele-abortion is correct, then this bill allows women to kill their babies no matter how far the pregnancy is. First of all, number one, killing of a human being is murder, no matter how or when it is done. We, the people, voted you to protect all people, including those who are still in the womb and not giving permission to legally butcher babies or any human, no matter how old. I have not seen or read the bill, but just the title, prohibit the use of tele-abortion, is enough reason to arouse my curiosity and desire to support. Anytime we hear leaders wanting to save lives, we should join the bandwagon. As voters, we call on all lawmakers to join the speaker and pass this bill. One life is more precious than all the gold put together. We were not aware of this hearing prior to today. My husband and I are both old and frail, and we thought that we wouldn't be able to make it here. But we pray that this legislature will consider not making it legal to kill, no matter what the circumstance is. The other reality here is, when a woman is in crisis, she may not be aware of what she is about to do. So many women take pills to abort, and many times, they too may hemorrhage and die. I want to suggest that you offer alternatives to the confused woman and help them. Give them options such as adoption, counseling, a place to go to, perhaps even a shelter only for pregnant women. I wish I can offer my services, but at this time, I am not able to. Sidoos Maasi for giving me the opportunity.
Buen por betso, Mrs. Tenorio. Sidoos Sanbini DC. Miss Viola Akfaji, Consigueret Mona, put for board.
Sidoos Maasi. Good morning, senators. My name is Viola Akfaji, a resident of Agony Heights. Thank you, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, for effecting the second public hearing on Bill 103-36. And thank you, senators here, for your presence. I would like to further my appreciation for the following: the in-person meetings with Speaker Therese Terlali, Vice Speaker Senator Stoney Ada, Chris Duaneis, Peter Terlali, and the Zoom meeting with Senator Amanda Shelton, as well as the policy advisors to Senators Joseph Augustine, Selena Nelson, Peter Terlali, and Tina Munya Barnes. Finally, gratitude is extended to all the senators for your acceptance and acknowledgement of letters, audio material, and packets of information provided by collective efforts of concerned citizens in reference to Bill 103. In my letter to the author and co-sponsors of this bill, Shelton, Munia Barnes, and Torres, dated April 15, and again resent all the other senators on the 16th of April, it was evident that my initial response to this bill led me to believe that tele-abortion may come to fruition via telehealth, telemedicine. As an anti-abortion resident of Guam, I found it crucial to set the tone to my grave concern over the bill by noting President Biden's administration's issuance of a temporary hold to health and safety regulations on abortion drugs, allowing abortion facilities to sell baby-killing drugs through the mail without ever seeing the woman or girl in person. Page four of the bill, lines 19 to 23, seem to align with the lifting of the safety standard in regards to tele-abortion. Why carelessly ease the restriction of these so-called medical abortion drugs? COVID-19, pandemic, a public health emergency. In the realm of pro-abortion agenda, telehealth and tele-abortion, this is a perfect marriage. A disaster in the making should tele-abortion infiltrate our island. Online consultation to kill the baby is unthinkable, from receiving the pills through the mail and through its intended execution of an innocent life's demise. A final observation that I'd like to share piques my interest to a curious research. This has to do with the reading of page four, under authority, lines 12 and 13. It reads, "This chapter shall apply only during public health emergencies as defined by 10 GCA 19104." This section, entitled Definitions, yielded several pages of definitive information with ABC designations. I found section M interesting and lends to my non-expert opinion how Bill 103 is opening the door to tele-abortion. M reads, "A public health emergency is an occurrence or imminent threat of an illness or health condition that poses a high probability of any of the following harms: a large number of serious or long-term disabilities in the affected population." I interpret affected population as the girls, women who are pregnant, who want to end their pregnancy and are denied their desire to terminate their life, their pregnancy. An article in Times Magazine by Jamie Der Charm reported that researchers shown that women denied access to an abortion who want one may face threats to her mental, financial, and physical health. Further data reveals these women report chronic diseases, persistent pain, and poor overall health five years later. I wanted to show the correlation among the sub-points derived from my understanding of 10 GCA 1904M that I chronicled earlier. In conclusion, I want to thank you for hearing my layman understanding of the points I described in this testimony, the cause of my concern, and now seek your diligent effort and attention in the ensuing legislative actions following this hearing. I wish not to throw the babies out with the bathwater. Please, keep the babies, keep telehealth, keep telemedicine, but throw out the bathwater. Throw out tele-abortion. Thank you.
Sidoos Maasi, Mrs. Akfaji, thank you so very much for your testimony. And at this time, Sidoos Maasi, I would ask of the panel, please, you're more than welcome to stay in the FOIA area, and after we complete all those who wish to testify, we may call you back. If you have to leave and have any additional comments or recommendations, please don't hesitate to write them down and give them, or personally call me, and I will personally entertain each and every one of you, but I will go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I could ask, I'm sorry, I don't know why we're changing the protocol of the public hearing process.
Senator Brown?
Madam Chair.
I will state for the record the rules of engagement for this oversight hearing. As stated before, I will keep this meeting based on the number of folks that wish to testify.
I have a great objection that I don't know why I should have this whole process.
I again ask.
......
Senator Brown, if you may, may we call the next panel in, please?
...
Please allow the next panel in. Yes. Sarge, you may accept your testimony. May we please allow the second, may we please allow the second, may we please allow the second panel to come in? We will have Mr. Joseph Akfaji, Mr. Benakfaji, Mr. Louis Gombar, and Ms. Maria Moffness to If I may again, Sergeant of Arms, please bring in Mr. Joseph Akfaji, Mr. Benakfaji, Mr. Louis Gombar, and Ms. Maria Moffness. Sergeant of Arms. Sergeant of Arms, staff, if you can call Mr. Ben Akfaji? That's, that would be you, sir. Is Mr. Joseph Akfaji available? Are you both Joseph and Ben?
Um, no, I'm, uh, my name is Joseph.
Joseph, is there a Mr. Ben Akfaji out there?
Uh, yes, it's my brother, but he's not there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Akfaji. Mr. Louis Gombar, is Uncle Louis Gombar out there? Louis Gombar? And Ms. Maria Moffness? Ms. Rose Baskey? Dr. Tamanan, can you please call Ms. Rose Baskey in? Ms. Rose Baskey? Ms. Mary Lou Sinagustin, would they wish to present testimony? Mr. Akfaji, is Mr. Erica Akfaji going to present testimony?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Just not in support? Okay, thank you. Mr. Alduennas? Sidoos Maasi. Ms...I don't know. I apologize, I don't know who this name is.
I have no idea.
Is there a Mr. Pupapi? Senator Casper Bauer, thank you for joining us, and Mrs. Ada, thank you. Again, please state your name for the record to this panel. Thank you so very much for coming this morning. Before I start, I would like to note for the record again that based on the author's opening statement, there have been amendments that have been made to this committee findings, and most notably, the one that specifically says, "Nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under Guam law via telemedicine." I will note that that amendment, based on recommendation and meetings with a lot of folks in the community, that has presented to us as a major concern, was added into the amendment of this, of the original legislation on Bill 103-36. I ask that each panel member please present oral testimony of no more than five minutes, state your name for the record, where you're from, and if you support or do not support or have any recommendations to the bill. And the, out of respect for our former colleagues, Mr. Akfaji, if you don't mind, I'd like to yield to our former colleague, Senator Casper Bauer.
No, no problem.
Senator Consigueye Monápofo. Turn on your mic. Gis, Giselle Hulusaina, Senatora Giselle. Yes, thank you.
Sidoos Maasi. Buenos dias, Samzoo. Maghur na mautu mogi pratavahan adanya patag diskutaisi na bill. I'm happy to be here to discuss the bill with you. I am very concerned about how we're going about doing things, and I really feel that part of this bill on telemedicine may be okay for other things, but I'm very much against the telemedicine abortion, and I know that there are about at least 18 states that are not allowing telemedicine abortion because they, the doctors feel that the patient has to be seen by the doctor, so that the patient has to be evaluated as to her healthcare, her health status, and whether it'd be possible for her to go on. However, to me, I felt like, I know that a lot of us here lately feel that we should not talk about God. However, Guam is part of the United States, and we believe in the Constitution of the United States that gave us inalienable rights, right to life, right to freedom to worship, and a freedom of speech. And I want to say that legislating abortion is against God's law, because when I hear a young girl saying, "It's my body, I can do whatever I want with it," it may be your body, but you did not create your body. You, as a woman, were created with a uterus and an ovary, and the only purpose for that is to procreation, and the man is created with scrotum and testicle, and the only reason for that is for procreation. So sex in human life should be for procreation, not for recreation. And I'm here to ask you to start studying and, and let's find other ways of legislation to help young people so we can get rid of incest, and even wives who are being raped by their husband. We have to have a program to help with the sexual life of our people. Let's quit hiding it under, under the bucket. We have to talk about it, and we have to find ways to help each other. We have parents that have raped their children, and some of their children's children are half-brother of, of the mother because the father did it. We got to look into those things. We cannot just say, "Okay, let's have abortion," and that will end our problem, because we're not, we're not the author of life. And you have a soul, and don't tell me you don't believe in soul, because we even believe in the ta'utau mo'una. And when you die, your body, your physical self dies, but your soul does not die, and it has to go someplace. And the only way to go to God is to obey his law, and he created 10 commandments, or his commandment, and one of them is, "Thou shalt not kill." And just because a woman and a man have sex, and the child becomes a zygote, that's the beginning form of male and female sex organ to be a zygote, and then you go to, before it becomes an embryo, the, you know, the first few weeks of development, and those are the most critical time of a child's life, the first four, five weeks of development, because that's where the whole body, the whole structure of the human being starts to develop. So I'm, I'm sorry that I don't have my testimony because the power broke. We have power audits, and my testimony is still in the computer, but I'm just giving this oral, and I, later on, I will submit my written, and I'll give the others a chance. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Casper Bauer, and thank you for taking the time to come here this morning as you, as you feel that this bill was very important to speak about, and we will accept your testimony. If you'd like to submit it to our office, it's senatorsmunyabarns@guamlegislature.org, or you can have somebody drop it here at 163 Chalantantopapa, we'll make that available for you. Sidoos on Bini DC.
Thank you. Do sesha, zotai taktajamzoo na infan bin indiyes, zusti tanus midun, antin midu koroson midu pentsheegui, dinnanzi patodudu sit. Munna na unseegi so'tsu ni para, para un grupo na diferencia gitodudu i ta'utau gisaguan.
Thank you, thank you. And I will also note again, based on the amendment that will be made, and I will continue to reiterate it, nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under the Guam law via telemedicine, and I know that Mr. Duennas had a meeting with us and that he was very instrumental in making sure that that guidance was included, so thank you, thank you. Sidoos on Bini DC. Mr. Joe?
Akfaji.
Akfaji, you may proceed, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, my name is Joseph Akfaji, a resident of Agony Heights. But before I read my written testimony, I am very appreciative of the amendment that you made, but because I already prepared the statement, I'll go ahead and read it out, okay? Buenos dias, Hamzoo, Chairperson Amanda Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Mary Torres, and other Senators in this august body present this morning. Thank you, Vice Speaker Barnes, for making it possible for a second public hearing on Bill 103-36COR. I humbly come before you to testify against this bill as written. Much thought had been pondered on pertaining to the bill that eventually led me to opposing it. I want to share my thoughts on the recommended amendment provided to this committee and to all the other Senators. An informational packet and an audio recording were also submitted. The amendment states, quote, "Use of telehealth for abortion prohibited," unquote. Specifically prohibition of medical abortion through telehealth, the procedure in terminating pregnancy if done in this manner is called teleabortion. Teleabortion adds another dimension that is much more efficient and convenient in terminating pregnancy up to 11 weeks. Currently, there are 17 states under the Teleabortion Project that provide this service, Hawaii being one of them, that are authorized by the Food and Drug Administration to send two pills to eligible expectant mothers via mail. The Mi phi prestone, once ingested, prevents live sustaining nutrients from reaching the developing fetus, eventually killing the fetus. The mesoprostol is taken 48 hours later to expel the dead fetus from the mother. We should all be cognizant that abortion is the taking away of a human life and often negatively affects the physical and mental health of the mother. Sadly, the killing of the most vulnerable and innocent lives occur every 20 seconds in the United States. That's 1,576,800 human lives needlessly and brutally snatched away yearly. 50 million abortions have been performed in the United States since 1973, when the U.S. Supreme Court Roe v. Wade decision made the procedure legal. Abortion deaths in the United States is about five and a half times more than the 6 million genocide deaths of European Jews in Germany, the 1,264,289 war deaths in the United States from the American Revolution in 1775 to the Iraq and Afghanistan conflict that began in 2001, and the 1,670,000 deaths in the United States in 2020 due to COVID-19, heart disease, and cancer, a combined total of 8,934,289 deaths. Telemedicine is necessary and good for the residents of Guam if it is not used to intentionally harm a human life. Time is of essence when treatment for emergency medical care is needed, especially in treating ailments requiring a specialist intervention that is not available on island. I want to end my testimony by quoting David Wong, a Chinese-American scientist, quote, "New technology is not good or evil in and of itself, it's all about how people choose to use it." Thank you for your time. It's a very brief, but, you know, I'm, I just want to make things concise. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mr. Akfaji. Mr. Duennas, you may proceed. Manana Sidoos.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the committee. Thank you for allowing your constituents, who are not able to make this hearing, the opportunity to present their testimony recorded by your staffers. That's a very, very good service, and I commend you for that. I would also like to thank you for scheduling the second public hearing on this bill. I support the bill and would like to make, to request that amendment to be made to prohibit the use of telehealth for abortion, and since the author, Senator Shelton, has already agreed to do it, I will forego the rest of my testimony dealing with abortion. Instead, I would go to the rest of the testimony that I've prepared concerning the bill itself. With the amendment that Senator Shelton has offered to author and include, the bill could be further strengthened by providing the Department of Public Health and Social Service the resources to utilize local telehealth. This would fulfill the legislative findings to assist the community health centers during the course of their daily operations and during a pandemic. We did have participants from Department of Public Health testify on the bill, but their testimony is more on the telehealth from Guam to off-island consultants. What we need is within Guam, from the patient at their house to public health or to the private clinics and doctors. By allowing them to use telemedicine, it would alleviate the problems that we have with infections and everything else when they come to the clinic or to the office. And that, that situation, the situation that we are experiencing in Guam is no different than any place in the United States. I urge you to read the attachments, the articles that I have provided, and you will find that everywhere, including Hawaii, the lack of technology, the lack of resources, the lack of interpreters to assist the patients prevents them from fulfilling the ideas and concepts of telemedicine. It's the same thing in America. They felt that telemedicine would answer the question of providing services to the rural population. When it happened, they were expecting people from the outside to reach into the cities via telemedicine. It did not occur, and the reason it did not occur was that the infrastructure was not there, and that's the same situation here on the island. So that is my recommendation to further strengthen the bill. Maybe we can have the providers of the cellphones to have a workshop to teach the people how to use the smartphone properly so that they can participate with the clinics and everybody else on using, utilizing their smartphones. The only other thing that I would like to bring to the attention of the body is that on section, section 29306 subsection 33069 subsection C, it states, "The manufacturer or seller of proprietary medicine in Guam by licensed pharmacist or druggist," or, this is an exception to it. My question is, what, what is the purpose of that statement? Because, you know, as far, as far as drugs and prescriptions are concerned, the Durham-Humphrey Amendment establishes two classes of drugs, prescription drugs and over-the-counter drugs. That's why when you go into a drugstore, you see the prescription drug area in the ... you see the prescription drug area in the enclosed area and the over-the-counter on the outside. So, those are the only two kinds of drugs that we have as far as FDA is concerned.
Uncle Al, by the, uh, just for noting purposes, you had mentioned, uh, Section 29306, sub-item C? I don't have a sub-item C, Uncle A. H.
I think it's on page, hold on.
Page eight, of "The manufacturer or seller of proprietary medicine in Guam by licensed pharmacist." That's what you're relating to, right?
Yeah. Okay, that's the one I'm referring to.
Thank you.
Okay. I also provided another article that pretty much says, uh, the amendment that I just cited state that "The state may not, under the guise of exercising its police powers or otherwise, enact legislation in conflict with the statutes of Congress passed for the regulation of the subject. Accordingly, if Congress has occupied this field for regulation, the state must stay out." So, that's why, that's my only, uh, other comment on the bill is, what is the intent of that, knowing that there are provisions, federal provisions, that govern, uh, the proprietary medicine? Other than that, my testimony is done. Thank you very much. And I encourage all of you to read the articles that is provided because there are things in the article that would help out the island of Guam other than teleabortion. Thank you.
Sijus Maasi, Mr. Duennius, thank you so much for your testimony today. Ms. Patricia Perry. Conseguir mona por favor.
Hello, good morning. My name is Patricia Perry. I'm a resident of Pidi. And I am, um, I am against Bill 103-36 as I read it, as it was written. Good morning, Senator Shelton and all senators. I support telehealth and telemedicine for Guam. It is a great way to be able to obtain medicine through the use of electronic devices without having to make a trip to the doctor's office. However, I am not supporting Bill 103-36 as we understood it. The bill lacks provisions to guarantee that teleabortion will not rear its ugly head in the bill and be included as part of telehealth and telemedicine. The possibility of including teleabortion on Bill 103-36 for Guam has a potential of great harm for the women and their babies. Abortion advocates are claiming that teleabortion, known as medical abortion, is safe, non-invasive, simple, and very private. And these are welcome solutions to the horrendous dilemma for a woman in a crisis pregnancy. Medical abortion requires time in the course of its use. The abortion medicine comes in two different pills. Mifepristone is the first pill. This pill should be taken only by pregnant women 70 days or less into their pregnancy. The pill has the hormone progesterone, which prevents nutrition for the baby and then kills it. In all the years I have counseled women and girls in a crisis pregnancy, some of them are never quite sure of the age of their baby they are carrying. The tests shows are positive, and they are not sure of the actual age of the baby. The first pill may not do its job to kill the baby, and the woman in a crisis may be faced with greater crises that she may actually need to undergo an actual surgical abortion. Moving on, after taking the first pill, the baby is dead, but it has to be expelled from the womb. So, the next pill, misoprostol, needs to be taken within 24 to 48 hours after the first pill. This pill acts as an agent to start the womb contracting, as in labor, for the expulsion of the baby from his or her mother's womb. This pill is not taken as a regular pill. It's not swallowed immediately. The four pills has to be placed between the cheek and the gums, two on each side of the mouth, or inserted in the vagina with a finger pushing way up to ensure its efficacy 6 to 24 hours after the first pill. Once it starts working, it's when it gets really dangerous. The woman will start these symptoms caused by the pill. The acronym FAB is what they will suffer from, and it's far from fabulous. They stand for what the woman will experience: fever, abdominal cramps, and bleeding. The high fever is accompanied by great body aches and pains. The abdominal cramps are so severe, and according to Dr. Harrison from South Bend, Indiana, that it requires high dosage of narcotic painkillers. The bleeding caused by the first pill is so treacherous that a woman sometimes suffers the loss of half of her body's blood supply and in need of transfusion. Both these pills suppress the immune system, which was the cause of the death of Holly Patterson, an 18-year-old healthy girl who died two weeks after from the lack of her immune system fighting the infection. Altogether, Dr. Harrison said eight women have died as a result. These are the concerns I am hesitant in supporting Bill 103-36 as it is written. It definitely needs provisions to ensure that the inclusion of teleabortion is guaranteed to be prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Perry. I do want to note for the record again that that amendment on, um, not on construction, notwithstanding any act, nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under Guam law via telemedicine. So, please note that that recommendation will be included in the amended version. Thank you so very much. And if your copy was not submitted, if you could please provide a copy to the staff to your right? Oh, we have ours. Uncle Al, I do apologize, Mr. Duennius. If you could submit your updated testimony, if you'd like to make some changes. I understand our committee doesn't have the updated version. I would love to take your copy. Just submit it now. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Madam Chair, Mr. Duennius brought in some good testimony here. It was broader than regarding the abortion. I think we should have the opportunity to ask questions on something that he has.
I will proceed with the next panel.
Madam Chair, the process of...
Again, I will entertain the next panel. Thank you very much to this panel. I invite you to go ahead and sit outside and wait if you can stay.
Sorry, Al. Sorry, Al.
Senator Tadejwi, you are out of order. That's exactly, uh, one moment for the next party. On the last panel, ladies and gentlemen, we have Mrs. Maria Espinoza, Mr. Pedro Borja, Mr. Don Equilani, Mr. Marian San Augustine, and Ms. Rose Busby. You're more than welcome to come in at this time for the next panel. Dr. Laurie, if you can join me up here, please.
Just a minute.
Thank you so very much for the panel being here, for being here this morning. I will restate the rules of engagement again for this public hearing on Bill 103-36COR for my colleagues, a reminder and for the listening audience. Those testifying shall be recognized in the order of how they've come in on the sign-up sheets. I ask that each testimony be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee, and please provide our legislative staff with their written testimony for photocopying so that our colleagues can have copies. Testimonies will be confined to the substance of this bill. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for additional questioning as desired by the panel here this morning. I will note for the record for those who have not heard, based on the sponsor's opening testimony and on the committee marked up, based on those who have visited and met with the authors of the legislation, that there will be a provision included into the construction that nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under Guam law via telemedicine. So, with that, I will start on my right, and I will give you, Mr. Don Equilani, you are acknowledged at this time. You have five minutes yet. No, you can, you have to leave your mask on for the protection of all those in this room. Sign him on. You may proceed.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Please state your name for the record, Mr. Equilani, and where you're from, and if you support the bill or not, or have any recommendations. Thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Don Antonio Ada Equilani. I currently stay in the village of Tolto, MTM. Of course, I have family from basically central Guam. I'm here to be in support of the ladies here, or our elders, who are in the, uh, I'm not sure if I can say the committee name, the pro-life, anti-abortion movement. And I want to say that I am in support of telemedicine, as you say, in the context of not allowing or providing for abortion, teleabortion. So, I'm in support of that point of view. And, uh, I want to make sure I stay within the parameters. I would like very much for women to have their options, presented to them, so that they are informed. I would like, uh, which is why I like, right now, the idea of waiting period and in-person, meeting with the local island doctor. But I think we have to see how the policy might be affected by, you know, what's going on with the lawsuit. But having said that, if it's appropriate to say, I like to make sure that women have counseling and they are aware that there are options other than, uh, ending the life of a new life, you know? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, I thought it was very important for me to show up in person and in support of these ladies, these elders of our community, and, uh, be one of, as a man, and respectfully to whatever perspective that women have, you know, whether they're not, whether they're, uh, pro-life or they aren't. I feel very strongly that all women should have the option of access to information, all their options, counseling. And I think that's something that might be provided by the in-person. I don't know if it's already, so, stay a minute.
Thank you very much, Mr. Don. And as noted again, based on the amendment that will be included by the committee, the provision that this act shall have nothing to do, and this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined by Guam law via telemedicine. So, know that that amendment will be inserted in.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. Ms. Rose Busby, you are next.
Thank you, Speaker. I came here without any preparation whatsoever. I was not going to testify, but somehow I was called twice. My name was mentioned twice, so. And thank you for the amendment also. So, perhaps, since you are going to be including this amendment, my testimony would not really be, um, that effect. There's no point for me in testifying. However, I just wanted to testify. I just wanted to say, others have testified that I am against teleabortion, but I am not against telemedicine. I think telemedicine would be a very good thing for Guam, especially in this time of pandemic, especially that it's, that the travel for COVID, because of traveling. I have also traveled to the Philippines for, um, medical reasons, and it's very difficult right now. However, I am against teleabortion, and others have already testified the possible, um, physical dangers of what this would be. But I am also concerned about the psychological effects of what this, uh, what could happen to the women that if they are taking these pills and they have their abortion at home and they actually see the fetus coming out. Many women that have had natural abortions or miscarriages still, after many, many years... Many women that have had, had natural abortions or miscarriages, still after many, many years have psychological effects, they cannot, they actually see their baby coming out. And so I am very concerned also that this tele, tele-abortion can cause psychological, long-term psychological effects to women. And also to be, to determine how these, this procedure is also recommended only up to 10 weeks. And in order to determine how long, far along you are, the, what women go through, women must go through like ultrasound procedure to determine the, how many, how many weeks they are. And so you can never be sure exactly how far along you are. And so it provides more dangers to women that could be, they might think they're 10 weeks, but they might be 13, 14 weeks. And the longer you go, the long, the older the baby is, the older the fetus is, the more psychologically traumatic this could be for the women. And these are just some of my concerns, and I just came in to voice these concerns. And thank you, Speaker, for the amendment that's going to be put into this bill.
Thank you. Ms. Busby, if you could just state your name for the record and where you're from.
Yes, it's Busby, yes, thank you.
Go ahead and state, state it for the record.
Okay, my name is Rose Busby. I am from the village of Tumon, thank you.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Busby. Mr. Borja, put the vote, can see again, wanna?
Thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I don't like, I don't like to speak long and everything, I just want to go straight, straight to the point. My name is Pedro Borja. I was formerly from Sinanad, then I'm staying now in, in Baragada, Totocanada Road. I just want to testify. I've never spoken publicly or anywhere, I'm not even prepared practically with anything on this particular bill, but, but when I see that word, tele-abortion, you know, it shakes my entire being to the point that, yes, I'm a pro-life, and I just want to testify about that word abortion, because the fact that I'm the type of person that I read a lot of scriptures to the point that when I read scriptures, when something comes to my mind or to my mind that, you know, it inspires me to the point that I believe that somewhere in the Book of Wisdom of Syrah, that the reason why death, you know, come to this world because of the fact, for me, I believe as the idea of, of the devil himself, because to the point that, that the devil influences everybody in this world, because he's very, very envious and jealous of us, because the Lord God is more merciful to us than him, to the point that it is really a war against, you know, good and evil. And abortion, to my opinion, you know, is evil, you know, is that, is death in itself, that the devil, we do not see the devil right now. But the point of the fact for me is that he is real life, he's really alive, and he's really, really jealous of all of us, because the Lord God is very merciful to us, to the point that the babies itself are, it's a God's gift. But then again, it's a choice, you know, a choice among men, but the, I know a few minutes is coming up. The point of the matter is that the real meaning of freedom, for me, is, is found in 2 Corinthians chapter 3 to, you know, 18, it says, 17 to 18 says, "The Lord is the Spirit, and where the spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom." All of us gazing at the Lord's glory with fondly faces are being transformed from glory to glory into the very image of the Lord, to the point that we are all images and likeness of God. That's how I like to testify. That's the real meaning of true freedom.
Thank you, Mr. Borja. I will note for the record, though, that there's nothing in this legislation that talks about tele-abortion. And again, based on the amendment that will be put in, please note that nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under Guam's law via telemedicine. So I want to make sure that you understand that there's nothing in here about tele-abortion, and I appreciate the testimony.
That's the real meaning of freedom.
Thank you. Mr. Mrs. Ms. Espinoza, Maria Espinoza, can see again, wanna put the vote?
Yes, good morning to everyone. My name is Maria P. Espinoza from Manila. And I'll just go ahead and start. Thank you for giving me the time to provide written testimony to Bill 103-36. In the context that this bill will protect the insured population of Guam with coverage whenever telehealth and telemedicine are used during a public health emergency, I support the intent of the bill. However, the justification to create a new chapter 29B is as yet not very clear to me. Before I make some suggestions, I want to go to page one of this bill. If you recall, on April 12th, I reminded everyone that telehealth and telemedicine already exists on Guam, because I personally experienced the convenience while I was taking care of my son. Services and prescriptions via telemedicine and telehealth were covered. I also shared that I came down with COVID-19 about a year ago and informed that, informed you that Medicare paid for their share of about 80% of the cost associated with hospital services and at G M H. So why would insurance companies deny payment for some other patients, especially during a public health emergency? From experience, the denials are always very technical. The billing department may have mistakenly used the wrong code, because I know that the codes change from time to time. Another possibility is a lack of data to analyze, data which requires some basic questions to be answered, questions such as, "Of, of the people hospitalized and/or quarantined with the COVID-19 virus, how many had insurance? How many were denied coverage while hospitalized due to telehealth and telemedicine? How many were denied coverage while quarantined in a government-approved facility employing telehealth and telemedicine? Were there any specific findings that justified their denials? What are they? Were there common factors to explain the denials to cover the services? Were the right codes cited?" And I can tell you from my personal experience, my, my son's bills were not paid for a year simply because they did not have the right codes. And so I offered them what Medicare sent to me, and they used those codes and they got paid. So numbers are very important in the insurance business. This is a tedious, ongoing process, but it must be done. I would now like to make some suggestions, and we'll proceed page by page. And for those of you who have in color, I use blue to denote when I want you to add words and the red to delete. I'm getting older, colors helps me get organized. On page two, line 24, change the word preserve to conserve. By definition, preserve means to maintain in its original or existing state. P P Es aren't meant to be preserved. It's kind of technical, but it's, it's true. In subsection 29, 301, I would like to suggest a few changes. On page three, lines 18 through 20, and it's under the subsection A, open and close parentheses, telehealth means a broad collection of electronic devices here, and this sentence should end after the word services. The various devices are being used between the healthcare provider here on Guam, consulting with others locally or outside of Guam. The other words don't make sense, they need to be deleted. On page four, line four, also under subsection C, video conferencing with digital image upload. We need to, shouldn't there always be a visual proof that telemedicine occurred? I don't know, but I, I suggest we delete or without. And then in subsection 29, 303 should be titled Practice Standards Telehealth Provider. They keep using provider and provider and provider, why don't we put the title next to that subsection? Makes it clearer to the reader what we're talking about. And on page four, line 21, under that subsection B, small letter B, "A telehealth provider shall consult, consult with the patient's primary doctor or the attending physician at a local hospital or medical facility, and together may use telehealth to perform a patient evaluation. I feel that the lack of a referral or a consultation between two healthcare providers would jeopardize coverage by his or her insurance provider." Section 29, 304 should be titled, delete the same, should be titled Telemedicine and the Insurer. If you notice, every paragraph thereafter talks about the insurance. So why don't we put the title on top so we know what we're, we're looking for really quickly? Adding the word insurer clarifies what the subsection is about. Page, next page. On page six, lines eight to 12, subsection, small letter C, we just really need to delete that whole section. Why? And I, I feel I have to go and read that section, it's very short. It says, "An insurer shall not exclude a service for coverage solely because a service is provided through telemedicine services, and is not provided through face-to-face consultation or contact between a healthcare provider and a patient for services appropriately provided through telemedicine." That is a mouthful. The bottom line, what it's saying is that the insurance company shall, they, they, they can't say no. First of all, the, the service is provided through tele, telemedicine, which means the medical provider is somewhere far away, and the, the insurance, the insurance company doesn't even have to, I mean, may not question the fact that the patient is talking directly to the provider somewheres in the distant land or on Guam. I mean, that's borderline, what's the medical term? You could probably kill the patient when there's no medical professional to, to be the mediator between the patient and the, and the tele, telehealth provider. So back to my statement here, I suggest to delete it, and then further down, I'm, I'm going to say something else. Insurance coverage for serious procedures and those involving elective procedures such as tele-abortion will be mandated. That's the one consequence that can happen, and this is where I feel that the loophole does exist, whether you recognize it or not, because the woman can be at home, she can use a public health emergency to justify she can't get to her doctor, picks up the phone, she already knows the doctors' names that are in Hawaii, calls them, they do the teleconference over video, and then she gets the abortion pill through the mail. And that's very dangerous. There is no ultrasound being conducted. It makes it really, really dangerous. And if we really care about the women on Guam who elect to get an abortion, we need to make sure that they are in the best care, that there's somebody here on Guam that's going to protect their health. So under the guise of a public health emergency, we'll give a patient, a woman, the opportunity to justify not having an in-person visit with a local physician as mandated by 10 G C A subsection 3218 point one. Under C, a woman will be able to obtain a prescription for medication abortion directly from the tele-abortion provider off-island, and the insurance provider will be mandated to pay for it. And I have a list of things here that this is very important. In the case of the Sandini Rado plaintiff versus Levin Titonu Camacho defendant, the district court magistrate judge Heather L. Kennedy denied the motion for preliminary injunction, among many factors. Here are a few of some of the things that she cited that I, I chose to put here. On page nine of that decision, that although a medical point-of-view meeting in person provides no more benefit than video conferencing, that's true. The question is whether the state has a legitimate interest in the law and whether the law unduly burdens a woman's access to an abortion. The state may regulate the medical profession in order to promote respect for life, so long as the state does not act irrationally or impose any undue burden on a woman's right to abortion. On page 10 of that decision, lines eight through 11, "Although defendants' arguments about the superiority of in-person communication may not be supported by affidavits from health professionals, common sense and case law suggest a face-to-face interaction is one of the best communication methods in a variety of situations, in a variety of situations and for a variety of reasons." And then one more line, page 11, lines four through six, "Under the undue burden standard, a state is permitted to enact persuasive measures which favor childbirth over abortion, even if those measures do not further a health interest." In conclusion, although abortion is legal on Guam, I would like to recommend that subsection 29, 303 that I mentioned above here should be substituted with an exclusion saying that there shall be no tele-abortion, that the in-person requirement by 10 G C A subsection 3218 point one must be upheld. This ends my testimony. Thank you for giving us all a present today, a second opportunity to review this bill in depth and to participate in this public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Espinoza. We'll take all your concerns. I do know that several of the concerns you have written in your testimony has already, will be addressed in the amended version. And of course, I will state for the record again that in the construction, nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure as defined under the Guam law via telemedicine, so.
Thank you so much for your amendment.
So at this time, thank you very much to the panel. Those who wish to stay to wait for questioning, if there's anybody in this panel, I do have Mr. Aldwin Alduñez, Ms. Sharon O'Malley, and Mr. Aquaji, who wishes to take line of questionings from my colleague. Mrs. Espinoza, you're more than willing to stay if you'd like for the fourth seat, if you'd like to answer any questions from the panel, or you may go. So I will ask that the, the other three members be excused at this time, and I will open the door back from the top and at the request of those outside wishing to take questions from the panel. If we can just get a, a sanitation at this time, brief second. Thank you, Mr. Mike. To the listening audience, while we're having the staff sanitize, if those wishing to present additional testimony, they can do so by sending it to Senator Munia Barnes at guamlegislature.org, or they Barnes at GuamLegislature.org, or they can hand deliver a written testimony at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Haganya Guam, 96910. Hi, Speaker, at this time, based on way they came in, I will address this panel. I will yield to the author of the, uh, legislation for comments or for questions to this panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll yield to our colleagues, and I will save my remarks for my closing.
I will ask that my panel members here today, joining me to, I will yield to them, give them the opportunity to ask a question or two, and give the, all the members here a opportunity to ask one or two questions at max, finish the round, and then come back for round two if necessary. And also, before I yield to the speaker, I understand the co-sponsor, Senator Mary Torres, is still here for any comment or question to this panel at this time. I will acknowledge you as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first of all thank all of you for coming today and providing very impassioned, very informed testimony. It's really an honor when someone takes the time out of their day, prepares written testimony and oral testimony, but more so looks into the issue and comes up with, you know, very concrete points of view and recommendations, you know, from your point of view, because that's always greatly appreciated. But I, I just wanted to note, as you're aware, I'm one of the three co-sponsors on this bill. And this bill is a telemedicine bill. And I co-sponsored this bill, well aware that in our Guam Code Annotated, our Guam laws right now, under nine Guam Code Annotated, titled Crimes and Corrections, under chapter 31, which is offenses against the family, there is a section here, 31.20, entitled abortion. And in that section, under subsection B, it provides that an abortion may be performed, one is by physician licensed to practice medicine, or physician practicing medicine in the employ of the government of the U.S. And number two, it states, "In the physician's adequately equipped medical clinic or in a hospital approved or operated by the United States or this territory." So knowing that part of the law, under abortions on Guam, the abortion law, it's very clear to me that telemedicine cannot trump the abortion law as written in Guam. This, this section, this amendment to Title 22 Guam Code Annotated cannot trump, under Bill 103, cannot trump or override what is right now in Guam's abortion law under nine GCA, chapter 21. And, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that, that, that the chair of this committee has been repeating that there is a notwithstanding amendment. But all that does is it reinforces what we already knew when we signed on to this bill, that whatever this telemedicine bill does, it cannot override what nine GCA, chapter 21, already says about abortion. And the reason is, and, and I just wanted to, you know, respectfully explain also, because I'm sure many of you are wondering, how could anybody support a bill that might open a door to something like this? Well, in fact, I supported a bill that does not open the door. And the reason it doesn't open the door is when there is a law that's specific to a subject matter, in this case, nine GCA is specific to abortion, any other law that's general, like telemedicine general, cannot override a specific law on a specific subject. So where the nine GCA, chapter 21, which is titled offenses against the family, where it says here, under subsection B, "An abortion may be performed," and it's number two, "in a physician's adequately equipped medical clinic or in a hospital," that does not include telemedicine, I mean, telly, telly abortion. And that was why, that was why I was okay to put my name on this, knowing that, you know, knowing that this was not a backdoor, this was not an ambush, this was not a way for things that right now, you know, our community, we have the choice of abortion, but we know that abortion is not currently being, there's no physician providing abortion right now on Guam, good or bad. Well, I, I know Sharon, you have some exceptions, but I just want to stick to my point, which is, the point is that the, if there's already a law that's specific to a subject matter, and in this case abortion can only be performed in a clinic or a hospital under Guam law, this will not trump that. And, and, but the withstanding amendment makes that clear, just for comfort. Okay. So that's, I just wanted to, um, point that out.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Speaker, Terese Turley, for the first set of, a round of questions, one or two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank all of those who presented testimony today, especially the research that you've done and presented here today, the recommendations, that those are all very helpful. I want to thank the sponsor for her suggested amendments to avoid inadvertent implications of this bill. But I, I think, and I want to put this on the record, that it is wrong to say that these amendments have been already incorporated. They have been proposed, they must be voted on by the committee, and they must not be materially different from the original bill. Otherwise, an additional public hearing would have to be had on those amendments. The change from being a bill allowing telehealth or telemedicine during a public health emergency to a bill allowing telemedicine at all times is significant, in my view, and requires additional input from all of the insurance companies and, and perhaps providers, because we do have some existing law regarding telemedicine, and I want to make sure as to how this, how this works with those existing laws. Thus, I believe that all the testimony we have heard today is trying, trying to object to impacts of this bill, that this is, all that testimony is relevant to the bill that is before us today. I, I did object to the referral of this bill outside of the Health Committee. I still believe that it is within, squarely within the purview of the Health Committee to consider telemedicine, especially if expanded, you know, beyond public health emergencies, and actually even during public health emergencies, that it, yeah, that that is squarely within the purview of the Health Committee. And I, I, you know, again, I thank all of you for your testimony, and I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Senator Casper Bauer, who said that, yes, we must, you know, work, do some hard work to help women who are pregnant, to expand and assist children who are in crisis situations, to expand our foster families, to reduce abuse, to support mothers and families who are struggling. And I think we have still a lot of work to do in those regards. So, Suzu Smaasi.
Thank you very much, Speaker Talai. And I will note to the panel members here, as oversight chair of this Bill 103-36, that once the amendments that are made based on all the recommendations and what could be utilized for strengthening and amending this Bill 103-36COR, that once the substituted amendments come in, that before it goes on session floor, I will commit to an additional hearing, so all you folks can have the opportunity to come back and look to see if there's any further concerns. So as oversight chair, I make that commitment to you. So, next, I have Senator Tony Ada. You may proceed with a comment or questions for the first round, one or two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for comment, and I think that the, the testimonies that all of you have provided, I'd like to thank you for, and I think they were all very significant in that the testimonies were in line with the bill that was introduced. And perhaps maybe if the, the bill was withdrawn and then introduced with the amendments that were the proposed amendments, then I think the testimonies would have came out differently. But just for, for the record, I, I believe that all the testimonies that you have provided in writing and in person are all very relevant to the, to the bill. And I think that based on that, that all the incorporated, all the testimonies should be incorporated with the committee report as we move forward. But thank you all for being here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Minority Leader, Senator Duainus, you may proceed.
Suzu Smaasi, Madam Chair. My first question is to Ms. O'Malley. Would you like to finish your testimony? I think you only had one paragraph left.
Senator Duainus, if I may, please confine the questioning to...
I can't question if she wants to finish her testimony, Madam Chair? Really? It's pertinent to the bill.
Ms. O'Malley, I will allow you, if you want any further discussion on your testimony.
I wouldn't mind finishing that last, yeah, one last paragraph.
Please proceed.
Because to me, the last paragraph was very troubling. I ended here. Section 29308 in the bill as written, the rulemaking. I was very concerned about this section. This section allows the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, within 90 days of the promulgation of this bill, the complete authority to make new rules and regulations without any public hearing or review, meaning this whole bill can be adjusted and changed without any public input. This alone is extremely questionable, that, just that one statement there and that rulemaking, it opens up a whole can of worms. The bottom line is that this bill has much ambiguous language, which has the potential for possible abuse. I personally did not address the insurance sections, as I am hoping they can do their own testimony. The greater mission from this Bill, number 103-36, is not including a statement which clearly states that this bill does not mean to override or include teleabortion a law on Guam. Thank you, senators, for your time and attention to my concerns, et cetera. Thank you, Senator Duainus, for letting me allow to finish that statement.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. And I have a question basically for the whole panel, because I want to thank you for taking your time, and all of the members who are here and probably still stayed in the gallery, even though I don't consider myself as well, but many of my friends out there are not spring chickens. Ms. O'Malley, I think you're the, you're the youngest one here. You're the spring chicken of the group. I wanted to ask the entire panel, because I think this is a pertinent question. The reason why you came to my office, at least from what I understand, is when you saw telemedicine in this bill, the ACLU sued the island of Guam.
Yes.
Let me finish. And, 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 and there, and, and members of this body were asked whether or not we would introduce legislation that would allow for, based on the lawsuit of the ACLU to Guam. Ms. O'Malley and the rest of this panel, is that one of the main reasons why you were very concerned about the potential of, of, of this bill to, to do what many of us senators said we would not do in terms of amending Guam law?
Yes. The ACLU lawsuit is very concerning for us, and it should be very concerning to the, our senators. When that lawsuit first came, first came out, I sent a letter to all the senators addressing the ACLU lawsuit and telly abortion. I'm not sure. The only senator who responded to me was Senator Talina Nelson. She called me up in regards to the letter, and I appreciated her call. It let me know that she read the letter. The ACLU lawsuit, in conjunction with this ambiguous bill, and that's what it is, it's just, they're looking for the loopholes. This lawsuit, I mean, this bill, 103-36, as written, would have given them the loopholes that we are concerned about. And then the whole rulemaking at the end just opens it up even more, which transfers authority and powers to another board besides yourself. So it, it just caused us a great deal of concern, because telemedicine is very, very good. It's very, very welcomed on this island. I've seen the use of it, a lot of us have seen the use of it, and we appreciate it. My concern is, telly abortion is knocking on the door. It's looking and trying to find its way in, and we have forces working on one side, trying to bring it in, and forces on the other side, trying to keep it out. And sad, our forces, I say, I, in one part of this, I was trying to say, I think in the sad reality, we have to be ready should it come to Guam. There's no regulations anywhere on the book as to what's going to happen on Guam when it does get to our doors. It's going to happen, and there, everyone gets upset when I say it. It's, there's, you know, I need to face the truth of what's happening in the world, everywhere. We, it's not a regulated thing here on Guam yet. No one accounts for where, how many people, which doctor is going to monitor who's getting the medicine? How many abortions are occurring from telemedicine abortion? I'm just saying, when it comes to Guam. The disposal of human feces, you know, fetuses is questionable, down a toilet or in a trash bag. We've heard people come to us who have talked about taking the RU486 pill, which is the abortion pill. It has happened where they picked up their baby and put it in a trash can. They knew the sex of their baby. They saw it, carried it, and put it in a trash can and disposed of the baby. That's happening, and this is going to continue happening without proper regulations from this elected of, uh, set of people to start considering regulations and bills and laws for when it comes to our door. Someone has to keep track of the abortions occurring from telemedicine abortion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley, and thank you, Minority Leader.
So Al, do you, do you have a comment with regard to that concern?
My comment is, is more basically on the abortion pill itself. For the record, this bill came into the world in 1980. It was approved and distributed in France. Since 1980, they were trying to get it into the United States of America. Federal, the Food Drug Administration fought against it. The biggest reason why this bill has not been approved since 1980 is because there is no clinical record to support the research on the pill. There is no known manufacturer that they can go and see the process that the pill, how it, how it came about, to, to inspect the facilities and everything else. From 1980 to 2000, nothing happened in the United States of America until they convinced the holder of the patent to transfer it to the John D. Rockefeller Center. And the John D. Rockefeller Center of Population Control is a nonprofit, and they felt that by using the nonprofit organization umbrella, it would defect all the criticisms and everything else from the government. And from that point on, it's been a battle to get this thing approved. The approval process is nothing more, it's contingent on who the president is. It started out with Bill Clinton. He was the one that gave them immunity from suit. So that's how it, it got into the picture. Then when the next president came in, they put a stop on it. The other president came in, Obama resurrected it again. Trump came in, they, they put a stop on it. All the process and everything else have been behind the doors, closed doors, between the proponents of the pills and the Food and Drug Administration. And depending on the precedent, the rules and regulations are watered down. We are now to the point where the doctors that wants to prescribe the, the pill sued FDA, and the suit ended up... And the suit ended up in the appeals court, and they said that the government was wrong in denying the release of the medication. That was appealed by FDA to the Supreme Court. When the appeal was done, there was a split verdict, because they were short one judge. So the Supreme Court returned it back to the district and asked the district to review the ruling and come up with something. The district reviewed it, and they returned it back to the Supreme Court, saying that there's nothing to change. By then, the new Supreme Court justice was sworn in, and they made a ruling. And the ruling they made was that the Supreme Court cannot tell the government agency how to run the government agency. It was up to FDA to decide how they're going to rule on it. With President Biden's, it was great. It was great for the FDA people under Trump, because they get to keep the restriction in place. When President Biden's people came in, it was their opportunity to loosen the safeguards. So the FDA Acting Director issued a letter that they will keep the rules and regulations intact, but they will not prohibit, or they will not prosecute or whatever, when somebody mails the drug out. So that opened up the door for all the providers and everything else to send the pill to all the states that do not outlaw telemedicine. Because telemedicine and the pandemic were the conduit to open the floodgates. Then last year, they filed a suit in Guam against our in-person statute, the constitutionality of it. So that is ongoing in the courts. The magistrate judge issued their preliminary findings. The plaintiffs submitted their objections, and the government has till, I believe, next week to respond to the objections. Our intent and everything else is to close that loophole. Now, in one of the documents that I provided this body, there is a company that is formed in Washington, DC, right after the letter came out, and the company is called Abortion On Demand. And the purpose of this company is to send out the pill to any recipient staying in a state that allows teleabortion, I'm sorry, chemical abortion, medical abortion. They'll send it to them. And they will not send it to the states that do not allow medical abortion. The purpose of this company is to resurrect the clinics, because the clinics took a beating when they took the funding away from Planned Parenthood, and they suffered more losses because of telemedicine, just going away with the clinic. So the intent of this company is to revive the clinics in the areas where they were closed down. So again, you know, even within the abortion industry, they themselves are fighting each other. But that was the purpose of coming together to present the request to have the amendment on our existing statute, so that it prevent companies like Abortion On Demand. The reason why Abortion On Demand, just to let you know, there's six states that allow it, but because this company's provider for the medication is not licensed in that state, they do not send it to that state. But once the, once the company gets their license, they will provide the medication to those states. We don't want that situation to occur on this island where you bypass your doctor and you just call up this company, and your medication comes in the pill, in the mail, rather. So that's, that's what we're looking at, is to see how we can protect everybody, not just from telemedicine providers, but also people away outside of it. The company that created Abortion On Demand recognizes the problem with telemedicine, that not everybody has access to it because of the infrastructure. They don't have the smartphone. They don't have the video capacity, and this would allow them to get what they want. So again, that's, that's one of our major purposes. It's not just to stop teleabortion, but to stop everything that's associated with medical abortion. Now, if you were going to the packet that I have provided you, there's a section, there's a packet there that has to do with the report from Hawaii. When you look at the statistics that they have, the number of abortion being done by telemedicine in the no test requirement, where the person calls up the number, they say they're pregnant, and it's mailed out to them, it's an insignificant number of participants in the overall number of people requesting abortion in Hawaii. And in Hawaii, you can request abortion in the clinic. You can request teleabortion with picking up the medication in the clinic, or teleabortion with the medication being mailed out to you. So with all those choices, it's a minimal number of participants on the pure teleabortion via the mail. So even in a liberal state like Hawaii, Hawaii authorized, approved abortion way before Roe v. Wade was decided in the Supreme Court. So with that attitude and everything else, the participants in pure teleabortion is nominal. And it's the factors that they indicated, the same factors. There's no, there's no infrastructure. There's no interpreter. There's, the people that have it don't have smartphones. And those things prevail throughout the United States, and like I said earlier, even in Guam. So that's, that's the impetus of why we gathered around and decided to approach the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Duenas.
Thanks, Ms. Fadji.
Thank you. I just, I think I remember vaguely the result of the magistrate Kennedy's decision. I think it was Kennedy, the local lawyer, who said, "Well, I think the next step is to try and infiltrate legislatively in the other bodies." So that kind of got me kind of thinking, that's probably what's going to be happening here. But, you know, I'm just really considering where we're at now today with Guam, with Fama Lawan rights, Juliana and her group. We have 1,500, about 1,500 followers. I watch the Zoom with Wheeler, and, you know, yah, yah, yah. We have 1,500 young people running around thinking, "We've got to tell our youth," and they use the word "youth," "about their options, the contraceptive options, IUD, something else, and abortion when needed." Hello? IUD fails, the pill fails, we need abortion. Look at where we're at with abortion. So I'm really fearful with Guam. I'm really fearful that we stand in front of the governor's office every Wednesday, 7:30, 8:30, praying for a change of heart, because it's dangerous. This kind of empowerment and youth empowerment to kill a baby when contraception doesn't work is so sad for Ireland. Or to espouse Dr. Mavaku about, you know, women back then, they, I'm sorry, he offered, "What can we do to help you?" Fama Lawan rights. That's where we're at in Guam. It is sad. It is very sad, and I'm just, and we stand in front of Sawbuck every Saturday. Those doctors, it's a birthing center, but remember when we had the Pain Capable Bill or Act? Oh, these beautiful doctors came up to say, "We productive rights, we must usurp unborn babies." So they are for the woman's right to choose to kill. Look at where we're at with abortion. Look at New York. Look at, look at, kill it, kill it right before birth. How perverse is this abortion thing? So in my prayer, and we pray, we still pray for the governor and Jane Flores and her daughter. Can you imagine, mother, daughter, sitting, having breakfast, "What can we do to help young people choose? Empower them to choose to kill a baby?" As far as I'm concerned, pro-choice, you only have two choices, to kill the baby, kill it, save the baby, give it life. We need to really be good for Guam. And I hope, I hope that Guam is still so unfavorable, I hope when they still continue to get abortion Dr. Guam, I hope they're repulsed to come to this island and set up shop. But I think teleabortion is heading here, and I hope you do everything you can to tell youth to get a good job, be educated, respect your body, respect, you know, be educated and have a rich life and stay away from this dark, evil industry. So I encourage, and they talk about future generations? Well, I say, the hope for future generations is born babies, generations of born babies. That's how we thrive. That's how we sustain, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Ms. Espinoza? And thank you for your testimony and your great recommendations for amendments.
Thank you for giving me added time. I want to remind everybody that when the laws were made specifically for abortion, that was pre-telemedicine. And in reality, what they were addressing are medical abortion, where the woman has to physically appear in a doctor's office to have the abortion procedure done. However, because of technology and the expansion of medicines available, we do have to insert language. And the loophole is, as I see it, where I specifically mentioned the section 29304, small letter C. When you, it says the insurance companies will have to pay for medicine abortion, what did I use, prescription and for medication abortion. You don't have to appear in a doctor's office for medication abortion. That's why I feel that the language that even though the amendment has been made, you still have to insert that word, those words, medication abortion, that will, is an exclusion, as I mentioned on the last, the bottom of my last page, that we still need to add those, the exclusion saying that telemedicine for prescription for medication abortion, it will not be covered, will not be allowed, because of the law, as I, to my understanding, refers to surgical abortion. Telemedicine is referring to prescription and medication abortion. There's a difference. And the difference is, is when a woman finds out that she's pregnant, she has 70 days to solicit a doctor that can give her the abortion pill. She's limited, 70 days, but if you read the, I'm sorry, I really can't think of the right words, when the Assistant Attorney General was making his case, the 70 days, you're still required, the woman is still required to have an ultrasound. Why? To protect her. She may be off, and if you are even off by three or four days, you are not eligible to take those pills. And if you are not, if you do not have a doctor or a medical professional to intercede for your right to health, you could die by having that section there, C. You can, under, if you decide to make it telemedicine available every day, she can pick up the phone and call the doctor in Hawaii and get the prescription to terminate her pregnancy. And what? She may be off, like I said, by three days, and those pills are going to cause her to bleed and die, and nobody will know anything. So I would urge you to consider the language to be more specific, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Espinoza. I do want to note the presence of Senator Frank Bloss, who's come back to join us. Thank you, Senator Bloss. Senator Joanne Brown, you're recognized.
Gosh, am I really recognized? This is the first time I've been silenced in the legislature. I hope the intent, Madam Chair, is not to silence my voice as an elected official, or certainly my constituency that are here also to testify, and those that are out listening. I'm really disappointed with how this hearing has been handled this morning, and I apologize to you that have come and taken the time to come down and meet with us, especially that we're only now returning back to having members of our public come down to the legislative session hall to provide testimony. And more so, because we've had senior members of our community that have come down here this morning to provide their testimony than to not even be allowed to complete their testimony, or allowed for us to interact with them and ask them, and ask, Madam Chair, if you're going to continue to interrupt, then by all means, I'm sorry. This is unacceptable.
Senator Brown, please.
This is unacceptable, Madam Chair, how you've conducted this hearing this morning.
Senator, there were rules of engagement. Please proceed with the question.
... Madam Chair, if you have a question, and you want to get silenced in the hearing, well, I will speak without the mic, without the chair.
Senator Brown, you may proceed with a question.
I do not wish you, Madam Chair, I think you have inappropriately handled this hearing. Abuse your authority. To control our ability to be able to ask questions of individuals that have taken the time to come down to the session hall is inappropriate. To treat elderly in our community and tell them to wait out in the public hearing room, and maybe we'll allow them to come back in and provide testimony, is rude, and it's unacceptable.
Sergeant LaWright.
I have attended many hearings in the time I've been back in the legislature, and this is the most disappointing hearing I've ever attended as a member of this legislature. And with that, I apologize to you that are here, that have taken the time to come and speak to us and relay your concerns, because whether we agree on an issue or disagree on an issue, we shouldn't be allowed that opportunity to hear what you have to say and certainly be able to interact with you and ask questions or address concerns that you may have. And I appreciate your time. I attend most of the hearings of the Guam Legislature. Some of the people you're seeing here, my colleagues, attend many of the hearings of this legislature, when many are not here. Many other members of this legislature do not show up to public hearings. Even though we argue we should be here, full-time members of the legislature, but we're not here to listen to the people, but for those of us that are to be cut off and to not be allowed to ask questions is inappropriate, and it's wrong, and it's an abuse of power. I apologize to those of you that are here, because I just think this is not how it should be. And this is the first hearing this term that I've attended that's been handled in this manner. I don't know why. Because I've had to sit through hearings too, where I don't always agree with the individuals that come to testify, but by all means, they have every right to speak, and we should have every right as elected officials, no matter whether we're majority or minority members of this legislature, to speak and ask questions, so that when we do go in the session hall, we make a decision, and they'll hopefully make a very informed decision, not our own decision. So, no, thank you very much for taking the time, and I appreciate your effort. I think you, because it takes a lot of effort to come down and speak for whatever issue you need, and for every passion you have, and it takes a lot of courage and time to do that, Madam Chair. So thank you very much for taking the time. I really appreciate it.
Senator Titigui, you are next. Do you have any question or comment?
Questions or comments? First, I want to thank you so much for taking the time to come out here, and believe me, there are several of us up here who are trying to fight to let you have your voice be heard. I too, this morning, I actually called the author of this legislature, if there's been any change to have a second public hearing in the legislation. So I too, I called myself, but I was told there was no change. in the legislation. So I too, I called myself, but I was told there was no change, that the bill is going to have another public hearing. So today, you're testifying basically exactly what you thought the bill that was going to be brought to the, to the session floor. So yes, you're in every right to be here to discuss the issues that, that face this legislation that you feel may be problematic. And that is on, on the abortion, telemedicine for abortion. And you know, no matter what, you, you have a great concern because anyone on this session floor can use the clause notwithstanding, notwithstanding 9 GCA Chapter 21 that was discussed earlier. The bill can be actually, it's as simple as that, notwithstanding, can divert that. So it's important that you're here to discuss that, that that doesn't happen on the session floor. You know, I too was concerned when, when I was here this morning that I didn't see that many people from GMH because there were so many other questions that needed to be asked from GMH that was not, not answered. And whether this legislation is going to have a third public hearing, I hope it doesn't go as, as fast as what this bill did, that was, that you alluded to in your, in your testimony as to why this bill should have a, another public hearing. After seven days, it was just boom. Since it's in, it was introduced, introduced, all of a sudden it had a public hearing so quickly. Telemedicine is being practiced today, today. I am for telemedicine when it comes to, but not for it when it comes to abortion. And you all know that. However, you know, I, I don't see the rush in this because we're doing it today. I mean, this law basically, if you look to a Florida law, a Florida law, it's identical. And we're trying to incorporate it on Guam. Every jurisdiction state is different, especially territory, because we have different laws on Guam that deal with health insurance. And we should be doing this through a round table, bringing the health insurance companies to the table to discuss this. And they're not here. Again, I was at the first public hearing for this one and they were not here. We have a testimony from there, but there are so many questions to ask them. So I hope, Madam Chair, that, you know, first off, this bill should have been in Committee on Health because I'm pretty sure she can get those individuals to come to the public hearing. But since this bill is here and, and, and I'm hoping that might be a change of heart and it may go to the Committee on Health, which is under Speaker Trelawney, that these individuals from the health community show up, healthcare providers show up, so we can ask questions. You know, I, I truly, great, and I was out there apologizing for not allowing you the, the time allotted. And you, it's very difficult for some of you guys to be here to testify. And so it'll be only given five minutes. This is the people's house. And that's why I wanted to make sure, I wanted to go out there and apologize personally to you all. You know, Mr. Duanez, I, I've known you from Benny Hears and when that does your homework and especially the information that you provided for us today. There, there is a question I have on your testimony here with regard, it's on your second page. What is the initial C D E R stand for, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you, can you read student in the microphone, please? Thank you so much. That's on the, the commission on a drug evaluation and review.
Drug evaluation?
That is part of, of FDA. And it's their responsibility to look at the drugs when they come in and to determine whether they're safe. And if they're not safe, what are needed to make it safe? And what parameters are needed, whether, which medical discipline is in charge for writing the script up?
Okay. Thank you so much. I had, had that one. Actually, and I'm grateful that our minority leader had given you the opportunity to speak more elaborate on, on your findings and greatly appreciated. So a lot of questions I had were, were answered there and even additional stuff that I didn't even think of. So I'm happy that he gave you the opportunity to speak more about it. You know, other than that, again, my apologies. This is not normal, but I'm glad to see that the committee chair decided to allow us to continue on like this. But again, si dos, ma si, and please, please be safe. Thank you.
Senator Frank Blas, you are recognized for any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then thank you all for providing testimony this morning. There was a lot to learn. Okay. There were a couple of questions that I have. And one of my, Mr. Mallon, I appreciate your testimony here. And it struck me as well because one of the things that I had, was looking through when I first read the bill and everything was, was obviously a concern of yours too as well, is it centered around public health emergencies. Yet, I looked through the testimonies that we have here and there are many instances where telemedicine and telehealth have been used over the years despite public health emergencies. And so I was looking for the nexus as to, okay, what is a public health emergency got to do with a medical emergency that's, that, that exists when, and it happens? And in your testimony, you said, and this is your, you know, the bottom, the bottom paragraph of your first page, one of my first concerns is the idea that this bill is only for use during public health emergencies. Can you expand a little bit more on your, what's your concern was there?
Well, my concern was this, and it had to do with when I was looking through the, like I said, when you first read the bill, it sounds wonderful, but then, why is it significantly a public health emergency? And then I said, we all talked about that. Telemedicine has been here forever. And everybody loves it and everybody appreciates this. And we have not, I have not heard of anybody having a problem of it being covered. If they do the proper paperwork, it, it's covered. And then I started questioning, is, when I looked at it in another angle, and I thought to myself, when you say public health emergency, and then I started realizing it because in a public health emergency, the powers switch hand. There's a different change of command on who's in charge of what. So in a public health emergency, it seems that there's overriding of, of who can make decisions. And, and in this bill alone, in the last part, the rulemaking, it seems to transfer a lot of the power on the rulemaking here to the Guam Medical Board. And, and that confused me. It, it seems to have, it's overriding what the legislature is doing. If you just read that last section, the rulemaking is very confusing. And, and even the beginning and the authority. So then who are these people who are going to make the last decision? And it doesn't even have to go through another public hearing. It, it's made. They will inform the legislature of what they did, but it never says anything about it having to be reviewed by anybody else. So a decision will be made down here because it says notwithstanding any provision. So a decision will be made by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to change within 90 days what was decided here. So what we see here is not going to be the same if they make a decision and change it. So, and that can occur because it's a public health emergency. So it changes the whole context of what is to be done. Anything can be manipulated. And that's the, because it goes under the public health emergency.
Okay.
And that, I think that's what everyone was confused about. Telemedicine is here. The insurance companies are covering it. If there's anything not being covered, it should be questioned with the insurance company. Why are you not covering it? Are they not covering it because it's a public health emergency? You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
The whole idea that they put during public health emergency is a problem.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, and, well, and because like I said, that has caught my attention from the get-go. And then when I saw that it was concerning, I wanted to get your perspective, the value of this public hearing process. Okay. And so I'm going to be one that's going to sit here and just going to listen to it a little bit more, to the wisdom that you can provide to this body on being able to craft, you know, meaningful legislation that I like with you to protect the lives of individuals. Okay. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Frank Blas. To the listening audience, to the panel members and to our colleagues, based on the public hearing notices that went out on this bill, I will note that we did receive testimonies from the insurance companies, again, and folks like HSP and all that. I will go ahead at this time and yield to the main author of the legislation to please read those testimonies for the record. And you may proceed at this time. I apologize. Oh, my God, our side. Senator Pito Trelawney, you may proceed with a question or comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to thank Sharon and, and Mr. Duanez and, and Mrs. Adfaji. The other day when we met, or that was yesterday, when we met, I fully understand your passion in making sure that we, we do that amendment that you ask of me. And I will push for that amendment. And I am, I just want to kind of just thank everybody that come and testify either for or against this particular bill. I just wanted to say that any application, I firmly believe that any application of, of medicine should be directed by the doctor. And that's my firm belief. And though I don't, I don't support tele-abortion, but I do really support telemedicine. And, and that's why I had mentioned that on any, on any type of medication that is being given to an individual is got to be directed by a doctor. And that's all that I have to say. And I, and I just want to thank Madam Chair for the opportunity. And I want to thank everybody that come and testify and beat me, Sharon. We've talked about this and you know where I stand in as far as our belief, not only in, in our good Lord up there and, and the privilege of, you know, having that opportunity for, to come out with the right decision on what we need to do and making those changes. And I, I, I can assure you that I will speak on your behalf in as far as making those amendments. And I fully understand what we talked about in my office. And I, I support whatever you mention, whatever you mention to me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Si dos, ma si, Senator Trelawney. Senator Legislative Secretary Shouten, please proceed with the reading.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I too would like to thank the panel of everyone who came to provide their testimony today and for your time throughout the last several days, meeting with all the senators and myself to make your concerns known and to help us as we develop a better version of this bill. And although, as I shared with you, I know that it was never my intention to authorize any kind of loophole or backdoor to abortion through this bill. I am very, I am very willing to add this amendment to make it extra, extra clear that it is not authorized via telemedicine through this act. And so I think the speaker, I mean, the vice speaker, the chairperson here today, who has been very receptive to these amendments, and we will continue to, to work to put them together for an amended version of this bill. And I also like to thank the, the chair for allowing me to read into the record the remaining testimonies that we have today. The first from Health Services of the Pacific. Dear Honorable Senators, I am submitting written testimony on Bill 103-36, an act to add a new chapter 29 to Division 2 of the Title 22 Guam Code annotated relative to telehealth and telemedicine services during public health emergencies. Health Services of the Pacific is a healthcare organization that provides comprehensive health service, healthcare services to clients primarily in the homebound setting. It is important to note that pre-COVID-19 pandemic, our clients usually were not able to access healthcare. The Governor of Guam declared the COVID-19 emergency March 2020. HSP immediately initiated our emergency protocols with patient care. The same week, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services initiated their emergency COVID-19 protocol, stating all CMS certified providers can use telehealth, telemedicine as part of the delivery of healthcare. And all telehealth, telemedicine visits could be billed as a visit provided the clinician documents to the plan of care. All care provided via telehealth and telemedicine has been reimbursed by CMS for the services we provide. In the past year, the value we have discovered using telehealth and telemedicine is immediate evaluation, treatment, and monitoring of patient care. Three short stories to share are, April 2020, during the height of the pandemic, PCOR-1, we admitted a patient into hospice. Although she was in so much pain, we were able to get the pain in control within 24 hours from admission and keep the pain at a minimum with a face-to-face visit via telehealth for the nurse and daughter and telemedicine with our physician. The patient died without pain, a hallmark goal of hospice. August 2020, a dialysis patient who contracted COVID-19 was actively dying in the hospital. The family came to terms that the patient would soon pass and asked to grant the patient's last wish to die at home. With clearance from DPHSS on our plan for strict social isolation and use of PPE, HSP was able to admit the patient into hospice. With telehealth and telemedicine, the patient's wish was granted. On October 2020, one of many clinic homebound patients had fallen and needed to be seen. His wife thought he might have had a stroke, but refused to get him to the hospital. Telemedicine visit was done. Visit coordinated with Guam Radiology Consultants for an MRI, and the patient was managed at home with follow-up visits conducted by HSP provider via telemedicine. Today, this patient is seen in a combination of face-to-face visits and telemedicine visits due to blood pressure changes. As we move towards a state of normal healthcare delivery, we need to evaluate our healthcare practices of 2020 and keep what is working to improve access to healthcare. CMS has determined the value of health, telehealth, telemedicine, and has decided that telehealth, telemedicine will continue as part of normal healthcare delivery. HSP is working on redefining our policies and procedures on the delivery of healthcare to include telehealth and telemedicine. Our clients need to be informed of the revisions in healthcare delivery. I think the intent of this bill is good, but the guidelines of healthcare delivery using telehealth and/or telemedicine need to be defined in the following manner. One, the clinicians using telehealth and/or telemedicine must have a current professional license from the territory of Guam. And two, adhere to standards of care support a clinical visit that is reimbursable by a third party. I respectfully submit my comments to Bill 103-36 and ask the senators to consider revisions to the bill to ensure access to healthcare, yet protect the community with professionals that are licensed to practice in Guam. Sincerely, Ruth Gurasami, RNMMN MBA. The next is from Select Care. Dear Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, thank you for the opportunity to provide our updated testimony on the aforementioned bill, which allows for the coverage of telemedicine during public health emergencies. Our company has followed the telemedicine coverage guidelines issued by HHS and CDC during the COVID-19 public emergency and covers the service based on the Medicare payment policies. We believe all health plans conform to the Medicare guidelines, but there are existing limitations due to licensing requirements. The Guam Legislature may want to allow temporary licensing during public emergencies to allow telemedicine services by physicians from our neighboring countries, since many of our island residents seek healthcare in Taiwan and the Philippines. The bill should include guidelines issued by Medicare such as, the provider must use an interactive audio and video telecommunications system that permits real-time communication between the distant site medical provider and the patient at home, and require that the patient have a prior established relationship with a particular practitioner to ensure quality and continuity of care. Telehealth or telemedicine services are essential during a pandemic as it reduces the face-to-face exposure to both providers and patients, and it mitigates the risk to the general population. Health plans, however, should be allowed to negotiate re- "Health plans, however, should be allowed to negotiate reimbursement rates with providers or use the prevailing Medicare reimbursement for this service. Please let us know of any questions that you may have. Respectfully, Frank J. Campio, Health Plan Administrator, Select Care." The next is from ETNA. Dear Madam Vice Speaker, thank you for the invitation to participate in the public health hearing related to telehealth and telemedicine services during a public health emergency. ETNA international health plans often standardly include telehealth/telemedicine services as a covered benefit, regardless of there being a public health emergency. In fact, the ETNA health plans for GovGuam have included these services since implementation, October 1, 2019, and were expanded upon with our rollout of V Health to our members during the height of the pandemic's shelter-in-place phases. While we were unable to attend the public hearing, we are supportive of Guam's interest to expand access to care, utilizing the various modes available with today's technology, and look forward to partnering with the government and on-island providers to bring quality access to care when and where they need it. Sincerely, Hassan Kiribani, International Account Director, ETNA. And I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to read these into the record as well as allowing for the public here today to provide testimony. May I close? Okay.
Please, Ms.
May I ask a question, please?
Ms. Afaji, I will allow you, before she says her statement, go ahead and proceed.
May I? Thank you. I'm just, I want to wrap my finger around this. So I'm looking at the bill, right, at 29302 authority, and then the last sentence of that particular section is, "This chapter shall apply only during public health emergencies as defined by Tan GCA 19104." That's that broad statement. So playing Nancy Drew, you know Nancy Drew, she's a detective, anyway. I went, I go to Tan GCA 19104, and it ends there, but I'm looking at this whole section. It starts with A all the way through, through, through R. So I'm reading, reading, reading down the line. I'm thinking, oh, interesting, all the definitions of public health emergency, and I come to M, and I think I said it in my testimony. M being, "A public health emergency is an occurrence or an imminent threat of an illness or health condition that." But I'm going to go back to L. So would Public Health Authority and Public Health Emergency, I guess they marry, because I'm going to read L. Public Health Authority is the Department of Public Health and Social Service, or any local government agency that acts principally to to protect or preserve the public's health, or any person directly authorized to act on behalf of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Now, sorry, I have to clear my. "The determination of Public Health Authority should be determined by Maga Law in Guam based upon the circumstances of a public health emergency. And the Public Health Authority shall be appointed by Maga Law in Guam by executive order during, I'm declaring a public health emergency, so it is declared a public health emergency." What struck me with M, and M, and it goes down to M, and then 1, 2, blah, 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 but 1 is is believed to be caused by any of the following: bioterrorism, no, it doesn't apply, all the way to natural earthquakes, it doesn't apply, but you go to 2, poses a high probability of the following harms. I'm thinking, that seems kind of fishy. So I go to 2, and I go read further. And 2, under 2, we have I, small i, a large number of deaths in the affected population. And then II, a large number of serious or long-term disabilities in the affected population. Thus, my testimony being concerned that the affected population might be the gateway to go into declaring public health emergency for women who want an abortion, can't get one, as COVID is here, and we, you know, so that was my thinking. I just, just to please humor me, are you seeing my concern with that section?
I will ask the Legislative Secretary to yield to that question, if you may.
Yes, sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I do hear you, and I understand your concern. And though I don't believe that these qualifications for a public health emergency would include the need for abortion at any time for an emergency to be declared, I do understand the concern from you and others in our communities, such as the Guam Memorial Hospital and Public Health, who testified in the first public hearing that they'd like to see this part of during a public, during public health emergencies struck out from the bill, and that is a recommendation that I've made to this committee, I made to the chair to strike that part out so that it would apply to telehealth and telemedicine services all year long, not during a public health emergency. Yeah, that's, that's correct. I did make that recommendation to the chair of one of my amendments.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Legislative Secretary Shelton, you may proceed with your comments.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the two insurance companies that did provide testimony today. I know that there was a comment made earlier that we did not work hard enough to get the insurance companies to come out today or to the first public hearing, but I want to ensure the public and the committee, all members here today, that they were invited, they were given notices of both these hearings to come to the hearing, to answer questions, or to submit their recommendations and testimony. So some have, and we will look forward to any other company that would like to give us their testimony. Also, there is a comment made that I had a conversation, I received a phone call this morning from a colleague regarding this public hearing and changes to the bill. I had no such call or conversation that, any conversation I had this morning with colleagues was really limited to what the insurance companies were doing and if they were coming here today. And so I'm not sure where that came from, but I want to ensure everyone here that the committee, the chair of the committee, and I myself, we made sure that these insurance companies were provided. There was also a comment made earlier that this bill was perhaps introduced at the request of the ACLU to resolve issues of a lawsuit against the Government of Guam regarding access to abortion. And to be very clear, as I stated in the beginning, in my opening statement, this bill was introduced long before any lawsuit was brought up or talked about in the media that we were aware of here. And again, it was introduced first in March of last year, and then again this term. And during the pandemic, during the public health emergency, and that's why in the bill, as we remain in a public health emergency, that is why this is the provision in the bill as it was written, that telehealth and telemedicine services would be used during a public health emergency. So that's just a point of clarification. And to end, Madam Chair, again, thank you, everyone, for the conversation today. Thank you very much for all of your input today. And to reiterate the amendments that I have proposed to this bill to the chair, and these are all based on the conversations I've had with folks here on the panel, with others that I've had meetings with, based on the testimony that we also received during the first public hearing. These amendments are as follows. One, to expand telemedicine and telehealth as provided in this bill beyond a public health emergency. Two, to make clearer the ultimate authority of our local medical providers over the diagnosis and care of our residents by adding a definition for non-resident licensed consulting providers who may perform services so long as they consult with a healthcare professional licensed in Guam who has ultimate authority over the diagnosis and care of the patient. And three, that the following language be included as a section to read. "Nothing in this act shall be construed to authorize the delivery of any abortion procedure or defined under Guam law via telemedicine." And again, I ask that the chair and this committee report out that any version of this bill to be reported out include this language. And again, Madam Chair, this bill is really about ensuring that we are providing adequate healthcare in the safest way possible to the people of Guam, and ensuring that we are covering this access to healthcare for them. And again, I thank everyone who's here, everyone who has submitted testimony in the previous public hearing, in this public hearing, as well as the written testimony that we received. And I will continue to work with the chair and this committee to ensure that we report out the best version of this bill possible. Sidoos Massey.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary and author of Bill Number 103-36COR, Senator Shelton, and before I do my closing remarks, I want to note to the body and to the listening audience and to the panel members here, as committed earlier, based on the passionate testimony and the concerns and the recommendations from all those that are interested, that we will do a work on the considerations, put it into draft form, again, based on that, submit it as a markup, and then have a public hearing at a later time. We do have session that's slated for, I think, next week or for the month of May, but I will make it a point to follow the open government. I will not adjourn this meeting, this public hearing. I will allow for continual testimony to come in as we work with the recommendations and the considerations that the author will put in, and I will allow for the public to come back for a markup hearing and to give you guys the opportunity to look at that markup version and then share your sentiments, concerns, or recommendations at that next public hearing, as committed to each and every one of you who has come in to see me on this. So before I call it, I know it's after 12:10, I'm going to allow Mrs. Espinoza to say some comments. Please, you may proceed.
Yes, thank you again for this additional time. I just wanted to make you aware that when you announce the hearings, especially if you want to provide live testimony, the way we are doing today, it says here, "For individuals wishing to provide live testimony, please contact our office by email with your address or call your office. Written, and then written testimony may be delivered." So I'm very technical, and so I called up your office, and I said, well, when is the due date to inform you that we want to provide, be part of the live testimony? And your office staff said 48 hours. I'm sorry, that's unreasonable, and I hope, and she said it was part of your standing rules. And so I suggested to her that it needs to be spelled out in the announcements because 48 hours is very.
Mrs. Espinoza, no, I think the intent was to allow, to make sure that we accommodate for the ADA, that we give you the opportunity, even up to 48 hours before, to let us know that you want to do it, you want to do something via a public virtual concept so that I could work the logistics out with audio. So I just want you to know that, that based on that, I can further clarify that I will announce to the public if anybody wishes for any ADA accommodations or to work closely with the committee to work on a virtual concept. Because our standing rules have been amended to include that, I can definitely work on those accommodations, so.
There are two separate paragraphs. There is one that talks about compliance with American with disability. That is the paragraph after, but the actual announcement just gives, says, "Contact our office by email," and I called to clarify, well, when's the due, because I'm a procrastinator, and I'm likely to call at 4:30 Thursday, and she told me 48 hours, and I go.
On behalf of our staff, we apologize if there was any miscommunication. I will not turn any, any testimony away. I will accept that. And again, based on the commitment that there have been many recommendations and many considerations, as committed and as working closely with folks like all yourself here, inclusive of Mr. Duñez, that I will do a markup hearing on this again based on all the recommendations, so hopefully that we can strengthen the bill and make sure that it meets the public's consent and testimony before we move forward. And the author of the legislation has agreed to work closely with making the necessary changes and then giving you guys the opportunity to look at. And my commitment on not being able to adjourn this public hearing. This public hearing will continue. I will continue to accept testimony. I will, all the way up to the day of our markup hearing, and based on the open government law, I will resend notices out for that new date. I will work closely. We do have session for the month of May, but I want to make sure that everybody in the public has an opportunity to look at the updated version. So with that being said, it's 12:15 right now. I will call this hearing on Bill 103-36COR in recess.